Call our meeting to order. Right, we pledge allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start tonight off with the roll call.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
All right, next item is public participation. We have no one here in the audience. Anybody on Zoom want to address us?
We've did have one hand up.
Matt?
It was the iPad.
Oh.
Whoever that is. Whoever's labeled iPad, if they want to speak, your hand was up. If not, we'll move on.
All right, I guess we'll move on then. Next we have a present-
That was KMEQ, and I couldn't hear at first. Now I can hear.
Okay. Next we have presentations. We have any presentations for tonight. Item six is our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the March 21st, 2022 meeting. Bills payable through April 4th, 2022, in the amount of $67,765.66. Item C is a resolution extending agreement and contract for fire protection from Monmouth Township. A May oral proclamation setting May 14th as spring cleanup day here in Macokota. Item E is Amendment 1 to the Sheetz construction contract for the Macokota Art Experience, the Upper Apartments. And item F, a resolution approving the 2022 annual schedule of meetings. Do you have anybody?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Holm. We have no discussion, then take the roll.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda passes. Item seven is public hearings. We have no public hearings, so we'll move into old business. Item A is a discussion and possible motion approving snow route parking tickets at an increase of $50. Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyons. Do you want to address anything quick?
I, this came to us from our department heads and kind of an initial department head checkup about fees, fines, and what we can do if there's any desired change at all. And one that was perhaps more timely, given the snowstorms we had, is the impact, what we have when we have a snow route violation. And Public Works Director Frank Allen comes from Minnesota, and I spent most of my young career in DeKalb where these tickets are much, much larger. We're asking for 50 here in lieu of $7.50 because we feel that people are more likely to move their cars. And so that the plow doesn't have to go around them on our major, major roads that we need to clear first. And it won't have a lasting impact for those that have a violation set. So with this, we hope to just separate the snow route ticket from the rest of our parking tickets, which are $7.50, and make that a side item because of the impact they have when they stay on the road, given a snowstorm. It's well supported by department heads, and we ask for your support.
Okay, well, we have a motion second, so take the roll.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
No.
Okay, the motion does pass. Item B is a discussion and possible motion approving a penalty in the amount of $50 effective May billing cycle for failure to have the endpoint installed. This is about our new meter reading?
That's, that's correct. This is the new metering system. For anyone that's not had this installed, their current meter, the one that's not an endpoint, has no ability to be read right now, and it will have to be manually estimated by city staff. That should make people more nervous than not having the endpoint at this point, but I don't, I don't know. We're, we're pretty high up for installations at this point. I think we're 90% today.
90% finished. There's 250 of them left to change out.
So we're sitting in a great position in what this does. And this is in large part thanks to the Finance and Personnel Committee that offered this. The May billing, which goes out in mid-June, will have a $50 fee assessment to it if you don't have that on. And then the June billing, which would go out sometime in mid-July, if we still don't have those installed, that's, that's a shut-off. And I think that will get everything in place for us because we need to be able to measure water. The citizen needs for us to be able to measure water. I mean, it's, it's a win-win. So we're asking for your support here. We've, we've taken drastic steps to communicate with the citizens, going back to the beginning of December. We think that this is the most appropriate move to conclude this project and make sure we get the final few left.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Simonson, seconded by Holm. Any discussion here?
Do we know how many of these, by chance, are rental properties versus homeowners?
I do not. I would say I can't think of a quick answer on that, based on what I know of our software system. I do have some suspicion that there's just some holdouts, but then I think that once we hit closer to 95%, if we do, there's probably some concerns about how are we contacting the owners still at this point? At what point are these vacant buildings? But I think we'll know the answers pretty quickly once we have that $50 fee and/or water shut-off.
The reason I ask is because when you sent out the list of names of people who still had not had them changed a couple of weeks ago, there were many multiple households with the same name ownership on them. And I don't, you know, I haven't seen an updated one to know if those are still a lot of the same
Sure.
ones that have not yet been changed out.
Yeah, we can investigate that further. With these remainders that are in place, our staff has been calling them, kind of like almost a cold call in a way. So we're, we're doing what we can to answer those questions. I don't know off the top of my head whether or not they are rental buildings at the moment. I, I think we're going to get close to low 90s or 95% and then be able to zone in on why a certain property has it off. And we'll find answers out pretty quickly.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
No.
Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, that motion does pass. Item C is a discussion and possible motion approving the increase for Horseshoe Pond campground rates, $22.20 per night or $126.00 per week.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Simonson, seconded by Colister. Do we have any discussion here?
What's the current rate?
17.
17.
Okay, if you don't have anything else, take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item D is a resolution approving fee and, fees and charges for use of city equipment and services. A motion by Colister, seconded by Lyons. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
No further comment.
Okay, then take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Coolman?
Yes. It still passed.
I lost, yeah, it's gonna make it. All right, well, we made it to new business. Item A is a resolution approving the city's investment policy.
This is, this is recommended by external auditors. They paid a visit to our city on March 8th, which was wonderful of them because they got to measure out our physical security, what we do with our paper procedures, and put actual eyes on the ground of what's happening here in Macokota and the amount that we're really improving the place. And it was a good visit for them. It was a good visit for us because we got their professional opinion on what they're going to be needing as soon as they start to review the city starting July 1st. So up until that point, they asked for the identification of two things, this being one of them. And this one's more straightforward than the other, but this classifies investments for the city, which we currently hold assets in a money market account to earn a better interest rate than a basic checking account. And if we wanted to go more detailed, they're more intricate than that than we could, but these are held in very, very safe investments for the sake of having principal available if we need to at a certain time. And this investment policy identifies that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Simonson, seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
And that passes. Item B is a resolution approving our purchasing policy.
The purchasing policy's been also requested by Sickich. What this does is identify a transparent way and a clear way to communicate with the private markets, as well as the council here, about how the city functions as a business. What that means is that if it's a certain above a dollar amount, meaning my spending authority, $10,000 as proposed here, it would come before you as a council to deliberate, unless it's a prior contract. And if there's a change order, it comes to you to extend that change order and then authorizes city staff to make purchases. There's a series of exemptions in your council packet. Take, for example, a water main pump goes out or some sort of lift station pump goes out, it does authorize that sort of emergency purchase, and it's outlined in that way. The library is also adopting this purchasing policy, and we'll be executing this policy as well. That's good news. And an extension of this proposal is we're redoing our website in such a way so that there's a bid opportunities page and any potential business that the city might consider or would allow some sort of communication with regarding bids. They can sign up with their email and be automatically notified of every time we post something there. It's a very efficient and fair manner to let people know what we're looking for as a city and post bids when they become available to us when we need those goods and services. This purchasing policy identifies this. It's a five-and-a-half-page policy. Sometimes these are 20 pages. Sometimes they're a page, and this came recommended to us by our auditors, and we applied it to what we do here.
Okay, so we got a motion by Colister. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Coolman. We have no more discussion, then take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution authorizing the award of South Main Street Connector Trail Construction, contract to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC. That's in the amount of $161,066.50.
Is there some more information on exactly, I mean, we have a little map here in our packet, but like, where will it be separate from the roadway and where will it be attached to the roadway?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the trail going north directly from the bridge will be just off the, off the shoulder of the road until it gets to Monroe Street. Then there will be pavement markings like there is on Main Street for the bike, for the bike path. And that'll just wrap around up, up on Allen Street, all the way up to, up to Summit, where it's going to meet with the trail that runs along Summit and Jacobson.
Well, through the cemetery, there's no real trail at all.
There is no, there is no specific trail along Allen Street. It'll be part of the Allen Street. It'll be the, it'll have those share-the-road markings on the-
Yeah, Allen Street being one of probably the poorer streets in town. It's just, I guess I was hopeful that the bikes might be on a separate. Okay, $160,000 to paint the street?
No, to, the, like, majority of that cost is going to be going from the bridge to Mon, to like Monroe Street.
Is this trail going to be concrete or blacktop?
Concrete.
Okay.
Damn.
I know it says Eastern Iowa Concrete Company, but they do blacktop too, don't they?
Uh, nope.
Oh, they don't? Okay, good.
So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
I believe it was Simonson made the motion. Holm seconded it?
Oh, Lyons.
Oh, Lyons did. Okay, Lyons made the motion, Holm seconded it. If we have no more discussion, then take the roll.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item D is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to make appropriate inter-fund transfers and sums and record that the same, and record the same in an appropriate manner for fiscal year '22, '23 for the city of Macokota, Iowa.
So move.
Moved by Colister, seconded by Simonson. Do you want to hit on this real quick?
I can just explain that beyond the council certifying a budget last meeting, the extra step required by the state is also certifying a resolution appropriating the transfers for the budget that you approved at the last meeting. Doesn't make sense to me, but it's required, so that's what we have here.
Okay, well, take the roll.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item E is an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3B, Section 23, pertaining to parking on snow routes in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, Iowa, first reading. This is part of the parking ticket thing and the change in the snow routes?
Yes, Mayor, this, I put this in front of you guys as a reference. Would be an embarrassment, I think, to have a police officer issue a snow route violation parking ticket to find out that that's not a valid snow route. We asked our public works staff to identify which snow routes are currently being served and compare it with the map that we have, and we've updated that map and adopted the ordinance to reflect that so that when you have this in front of you for a proposal and upon your vote, we'll affect these snow routes for, for when they're needed for any sort of enforcement action.
Will we be getting the appropriate number of signs on these streets? Because I think there's some contention now that some of these aren't marked that well.
Yes, 100%. We've thought about that, and we've had some internal discussion about that and making sure that these are appropriately marked, because yes, we are in front of a vote here now to identify them. We'll get those signs up.
Especially when we're going to be charging 50 bucks.
Yes.
Frank, just a general comment. Why is Ayler's Lane a snow route?
Just because of the nursing home.
But why isn't German Street, McKenzie, and Carlisle?
It's not as critical due to the, due to the steepness of the hill going up to the nursing home on Ayler's. Ayler's Lane's always been a problem in the wintertime. We always keep that clear.
Anyone want to make a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Lyons, seconded by Good. We have no more discussion. Go ahead and take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, motion, motion passes. Maybe we should try to get a map over to Kelly Newspaper, get it put in now.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'll touch base there tomorrow.
All right.
Is it on our website?
Not yet.
Please?
All right, item F is an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 18, pertaining to water utility billing rates of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, Iowa. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, one of the first challenges I was presented with when I arrived here on January 11th was, won a budget process and, and, and other things, but Andrea, who's with us here tonight, this was one of the first things she's, she talked to me about, and is the, the coming rate increases in order to afford a wastewater treatment plant that's been state mandated at this point. This is no good situation. It's not one that I like proposing, but it's better than the 20 and 25% that we were originally dealing with. And I know not everyone in this room and in the public knows what we're up against, but to arrive at 7.5% and 7.5% and threes after was a heck of an exercise. It's not one that I think that anyone wants, but it will make the Macokota River and the byproducts of the wastewater process a lot more environmentally friendly and in alignment with what the EPA and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources requires. I will say that I think that we as a city have a luxury, that our current facility is so old and has gone through rounds of equipment upgrades, and we've extended those lives well. And where we're at right now in the application process is something called the 60% design phase, and we have some advantageous loan terms in front of us. So I know rates are going up and those things, but we have right now an opportunity to seize and take advantage of some cheap money still. We've laid out a budget table as efficiently as possible in this agenda for you to observe what we're up against. I did lay in front of you as well what a water bill, sewer bill, and trash bill looks like so that you can understand what I'm talking about in my agenda here, about how the breakdown happens. Houses, homes typically use anywhere from 300 units of water to 1,000. I have two pages here, one at 689 units and one at 310. You can imagine that the cost increase here is below 10%, of course, on what the increase will be. It's not a significant amount, but I thought it was a fair trade for keeping the tax rate stable and keeping that flat so that we stay tax competitive and kind of knowing in the back of my mind that this was in our future requirement and, and one that's needed. It should allow us to also experience less chemical costs, because right now the wastewater treatment plant facility chlorinates sewage and then de-chlorinates sewage, and it's an expensive process, so hopefully this ends up being a good project for the city, one that's good for the city's growth in the future and allows us to have a good environment. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. The, you know, we're, we're working with a 20 years since the last major upgrade to the wastewater plant. And, you know, that combined with, as, as mentioned, DNR and EPA basically coming down and saying you will make these improvements, that's kind of where we're at.
Be happy to take questions on this. This has been a real progress or process for the city staff for the last few months.
So say on this front page here, the 689.
Yes.
What would the difference in their bill be under the new rate versus what's on here?
20 or 30 cents, maybe? I think it's just a little bit more than that, but if you stand by, I'll get it to you. Just one second, please.
Doesn't have to be exact.
$5. It's not extraordinary. So if, if you want to find the answer to that question, you would take your water, sewer, and stormwater line times 1.075.
Yeah, I just, in reading all the packet and all these things to increase people's possible bills, I'm just thinking of all the people that are on fixed incomes and low income in town.
Yeah.
Every little bit, like me, that's, every little bit's a big hit. My income's never going to go up, but my bills are all going up constantly, so got to find a hole somewhere.
Right, and-
But I, I get that we need it. At the same time, I'm just cautious over voting for things that are raising my own bills along with half or more of the citizens of Macokota who are on fixed income.
This was a long debate. This was either going to be this or 20%.
Yeah, I, I get it. I'm just saying that-
In fact, we had a long debate.
It's my caution in raising bills right there is that we've got so many people in this town who are on fixed incomes and-
I took it as, you know, you're taking a lunch out of somebody's mouth, essentially, right? So when we, we hashed this out at committee, that was long in the tooth, that conversation. It, it's unfortunate. In this situation, it's probably, like Josh said, it could have been 20%, but the way costs are anyway, if we don't do something with that wastewater and get it updated now, what's going to happen in a year or two, you know? All right, but I think this is fair.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Simonson. Do we have any more discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III, Section 4, pertaining to sewer utility billing rates of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, Iowa. This is the first reading of this. Josh, you want to talk about it?
No further comment. I think we've addressed this in some form. The only other thing I'll, I'll add regarding the last conversation is that, you know, I think one of the other questions is what about the big users? And we were, we're careful to include them in this cost increase so this doesn't just fall on families of Macokota. These are businesses, small and large, as well.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Simonson, seconded by Holm. Any internal discussion? Then take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Made it all the way to reports and communications. Does anybody from the city council have anything to report?
Mayor, I think we have one more, the sewer one. H, item H.
I thought that was the one I- I think I read the wrong one before. We've got item nine. I think we skipped over nine. An ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 22, Section 5, pertaining to stormwater billing rates in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota. Still more of the same?
Well, I, I addressed that in my last comments, but let's go ahead and approve it again just to be safe, and then we'll move on to sewer.
Okay, have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Lyons?
Second.
Seconded by Simonson. We have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Do we want to do H again, or?
We didn't do H before, correct?
Yeah, we missed it.
We missed H before.
All right, an ordinance, item H is an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III, Section 4, pertaining to sewer utility billing rates, Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota, Iowa, first reading.
So move.
Okay, move, motion by Good?
Second.
Seconded by Holm. We have no discussion, then take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickarol?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to reports and communications. Anybody on the council wish to report anything?
I, this is, I guess this is reporting something. I was pulled aside at the Jackson County Historical Society Supper by one of our senior, senior citizens who watches this proceeding. And she informed me that we aren't talking loud enough. She can't hear what we're saying sometimes. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Maybe we can get a little closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Or speak a little louder. That's it.
Does anybody else have anything? City manager?
I just have a couple of things before we take off tonight. That windstorm we had last week knocked out a power pole behind the building here. And requirement of, of MMEU and what's needed to repair it in a certain way is going to cause us to have to shut down here for an afternoon on April 14th. That's a Thursday, and we're still working out the details of that, but we'll communicate appropriately so that we have the right message out there on behalf of the council. But there was a power pole behind here that went out, and there was one across the street that was wobbling. So it was kind of a scary experience to the lines behind the building here for an afternoon. And good news, spring cleanup day is May 14th as a city. I've volunteered my Oklahoma drill, my Oklahoma- I've volunteered my Oklahoma drill, my Oklahoma Joe drum smoker. It'll be, the grill will be hot, so if anyone wants to come out and help with some spring cleanup, I'm going to put the grill to use and seize it back from the chief of police, who's kindly taken care of it over my transition.